Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 30th, 2020 emergency meeting. This morning, we are going to, well, let me do this first. I want to make sure we have a form, which we do, so we will continue with the meeting. Emergency provision notice in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.045. This is an emergency meeting of the city council declaring an emergency urge of public necessity for the purpose of considering the following emergency agenda items. And the first one, of course, is to call the meeting to order and establish form, which we have already done. Number two, special instructions. All members of the city council and staff should begin speaking by stating their full name and SMD position or role within the city. We will move into our public comment section. And we have three people who are two people and three comments for our public comment area. And the first is Misty Caldwell, and she says, "We don't need the restrooms nor the play area. I have my own bathroom in my RV and want to overnight camp with my family." She also sent a second one, which is open up the KOA walking area. Then the third public comment is from Brandon R. Pilchek. Pilchek is P-I-L-C-I-K, I probably mispronounced that, in regards to extending the declaration of local disaster. And he says, "There is no local disaster, except for your leadership over the last few weeks. Taking $400,000 from the federal government is criminal, given the reality of what's happening in City of San Angelo, which is statistically and literally nothing. You should be ashamed, and I will not comply. Best regards." Those are the three public comments that we have for today. So we will now move into the emergency agenda. Item A, consider extending the declaration of a local disaster. And we're going to have City Attorney Teresa James lead us through this. But Teresa, to begin with, I would like you to talk about two things. So many people have made comments that this emergency disaster situation is unconstitutional. And so if you would talk about that, and then many other people have said that the city has total authority, and that we should not be, that we have control over what we choose to do and not to do. So would you talk about those two things first before we go into the emergency disaster?
Yes, ma'am. Teresa James, City Attorney. I'm asked the constitutionality issue. This is not the first pandemic that the United States has had. We had one in the early 1900s, 1918, 1919. And all of these same concerns and same issues were raised then, from the authority of local governments to what the best practices are. And so the US Supreme Court has already decided that in instances like this, where it's necessary for the preservation of the health of the community, that governments can restrict some of the rights that people have. And especially when it comes to their movement, requiring them to do things or operate in a way that they otherwise wouldn't. We see some of that on a daily basis, whereas we have fire codes, which require that businesses operate at a certain occupancy anyway. We just limited that even further. The governor did actually through his order during this time. The other question is whether or not we have any authority. I think under prior orders, there was a little bit more wiggle room. But in this order, the governor did a really good job of ensuring that there's not local control over these issues, despite the fact that we requested it, as well as other cities. And his order specifically states that this order supersedes any conflicting order to the extent that such local order restricts essential services or reopen services allowed by this executive order, allows gatherings prohibited by this executive order, or expands the list of essential services, or the list or scope of reopen services. So we can't limit them anymore, and we can't make it any greater. He has closed a very tight loophole around this. So we are all subject to this particular order.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Teresa on those two areas? Because I'm sure many of you have heard the same comments that I have. Okay, with none, then Teresa, will you want to go ahead and talk through extending the declaration of a local disaster?
Yes, ma'am. As you are aware, our prior disaster declaration will expire at midnight tonight if we don't renew it. So we are recommending that we do renew the declaration. In this renewal, what we're essentially going to be doing is adopting as local requirements everything that the governor adopts as a state requirement. Again, we don't have any ability to do anything more or less restrictive than that. But what that does, the reason we want to do that, is we do have some local enforcement mechanisms in our code of ordinances that are a little bit easier to cite to and a lot easier for municipal court to manage when we're referring to our own codes of ordinances. It also ensures that we are eligible, remain eligible for any kind of FEMA reimbursement that may occur. In addition to adopting the governor's order, which I want to go through with a little more specificity in a second, we are also taking, requesting we take the following action today. We still want to prohibit those itinerant or temporary health permits. Those are the permits that allow people to come into town, set up in a parking lot somewhere, and operate on a short-term basis. Those businesses tend to see a lot of people in a limited amount of time, and we don't know the health status or, you know, the conditions of any of those folks who come through. So it's the recommendation, we continue restricting those. We're still going to say that all fee increases that were supposed to take place in this next fiscal year will be reevaluated in the next budget year. We're still going to authorize Daniel to enter any agreements necessary to provide shelter or basic needs. We have a number of hotels that we have negotiated rates for and are ready to execute contracts as soon as we need a hotel for either a temporary hospital setting or just quarantine or isolation facilities, even if it's just for first responders who are not comfortable going home. This authorization would authorize Daniel to execute those agreements without taking further action of council. We are addressing the KOA, as everybody knows, it's been closed for a period of time. We are recommending that it reopen starting Monday at midnight. So if anybody wants to go run at 1:00 AM on Hillside, they would be able to under this new order, starting Monday. Staff is directed, however, in this order to designate appropriate parking spots. That's probably something that needs to occur there anyway, and to prohibit parking on the right-of-way or on the pavement outside of designated parking areas. And we've already looked at what area that would be, and it's a pretty clear Caliche surface where people generally park. That's the parking that we intend to leave open. But again, prohibit people from parking down the sides of the streets or on the grass in that park. And then we want to continue waiving late fees for late payments to the water utility through May 31st, 2020. So does anybody have any questions about any of those provisions before I go on to the governors?
Yes, Tommy Hebert has a question.
Tommy Hebert, single member District 1. Teresa, on the KOA thing that you just talked through just then, what would enforcement look like? Are we talking towing vehicles? Are we talking citation if they park where they are not supposed to park?
Putting it in this emergency declaration does give us more options. There's always the opportunity to have somebody cited for a parking violation if they're parking someplace where they should not. Shane Kelton will issue administrative orders that will designate these areas as no parking zone so that we can use the regular parking process. But putting it in our local order, as we're doing, also subjects people who continually violate it to the authority under our code of ordinances, which could be a fine up to $1,000 for violating an emergency order.
And are we concerned, since we have Dr. Vareti with us, are we concerned about congregating out there as we were initially? And I'm assuming that's the reason we're requiring the parking in the designated area. Are we concerned about the congregating aspect out there or not, not at this point in time?
You're muted, Doc.
Did you hear that question?
I think Dr. Vareti's.
Oh, Dr. Vareti, can you speak? We're unmuting you, unmuting you in just a minute here. We're working on it. You're on.
Yeah, Dr. James Vareti, I'm the local health authority. Yes, we're concerned about the size of gatherings there. I mean, one of the main reasons that we closed the KOA in the first place was because we were seeing, instead of small family groups going, large groups going up and down the street. So it kind of violated our 10-person rule. So, you know, people stay apart from each other. You know, I'm fine with it. I want out of this trailer as much as everybody else wants out of their house.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Dr. Vareti.
Tom Thompson has a comment.
Hey, I guess this will go to Teresa. Any chance we could open that thing up like tomorrow or Saturday and let them go sooner than Monday? I mean, it's going to be a brutally hot weekend.
Well, I think the concern is that we have to allow Shane and his guys to get out there and put up proper signage and to designate that area. And we wanted to make sure they had an adequate time to do that. So, and I think also there's some logic in reopening services like this on a Monday because it does stop everybody from going out there at one time on a Saturday. I know people are really wanting to get back on that trail. And if we open it on the weekend when everybody's available, everybody's going to try to go out there. And it's more likely we're going to have a big congregating issue that police is going to have to deal with.
Understood.
Lucy? Just a minute, Lucy. They haven't unmuted you yet. Give me a minute. You're on.
Teresa, I don't know if this is the place to ask this question, but what about the lakes as far as I had gotten a phone call from someone that wanted to know if they could go swimming at the lake, at the beach portion of it? What, were we there?
We are going to amend Dr. Vareti's order regarding public parks. We are going to keep the beaches closed, and we're going to keep camping closed. Pavilions are going to stay closed, the bathrooms, the water fountains, and the basketball courts. And the reason for that, I know that we've had requests to reopen camping, is we don't have any mechanism by which to control the number of people who go out there or the distance they're staying apart. And so until the governor opens us up a little more, and I'll talk about this a little more when I talk about the governor's order, is that he still is requiring through his order that except for going to these businesses that are now reopened or other essential services, we are still supposed to be keeping our distance from people outside of our household. So he has only allowed us outside of our household to attend different kind of, to different kinds of needs. He hasn't said that everybody can congregate with people, no matter where they live anymore. So until he opens that up, it's really not feasible for us to enforce those rules at those places. The question has, I'm sorry, the question has come up about swimming. If you're swimming from a location other than the beach, and we're not prohibiting swimming in the lake, we're just prohibiting the beach.
I made a mistake when I read Misty Caldwell's first comment. I, let me start over reading her comment, because it's kind of what we're talking about right now anyway. She says, "Please, please open up overnight camping at Lake Nazworthy Middle Concho Park for those of us that have self-contained RVs or motorhomes. Overnight camping has more social distancing than going to HEB or Walmart or even the movie theater. We don't need the restrooms nor the play area. I have my own bathroom in my RV and want to overnight camp with my family." Now, this is from someone who actually lives in San Angelo and wants to take their RV out to the lake, but she is a San Angelo resident, unlike trying to stop RVs from coming in from other communities. So how do we address that?
I think, again, it's just an enforcement issue. There's, it would be extremely difficult for us to enforce San Angelo-only RVs out at the lake. And again, I have no doubt that she would maintain distance from other people. But once we start allowing one group of folks in, we really, for equal protection reasons, have to allow lots of people in. And not all of them are following the rules to the same extent. I saw somebody post somewhere that, you know, this really is kind of like the whole class being kept in for recess because that one kid who wouldn't stop talking in class. And it is a little bit like that. I mean, we have to make sure that we're limiting our activities to the extent that we know we can control and enforce the rules that we're passing.
Do I have further questions for Teresa or for Dr. Vareti at this point on the declaration? All right, continue, Teresa.
Okay, I want to go, since we are adopting the governor's order, I kind of want to go through that with a little more specificity for you guys. First, as I've said before, there is the same household requirement that's still being imposed. What it actually says is every person in Texas, except where necessary to provide or obtain essential services or reopen services, minimize social gatherings and minimize in-person contact with people who are not in the same household. So this is not going back to no more than 10 people or 50 people. We're still supposed to only be socializing with people from our same household. Essential services, he provided in this document, the updated version, which is 3.0. As you may know, last week when we looked through that version, it's a much more expanded version. The prior versions of this document really were for disasters like tornadoes or hurricanes, which are more limited in duration. This 3.0 version takes into account, one, we have different kinds of services that are needed. Lots of IT services, lots of health services were added. But also that this is more likely going to be a longer term, you know, over the course, instead of weeks, months, or even maybe years, that we're going to be looking at this. And so it expanded the list of things that can be opened, including changing the requirement on household goods. The prior document said that it was only the repair and maintenance of personal and household goods that was essential. Now it's changed it just through commas, that the provision of household goods, personal goods, as well as the maintenance and repair of those things is now essential. This, his order does go into effect tomorrow, so at midnight on Friday, it goes into effect. It is limiting all retail establishments to 25% of the total listed occupancy.
Teresa, let's make sure it's 12:01 AM on Friday, not 11:59 PM Friday. So just to be fair.
Right, yes. It is 12:01 AM. In-store retail services are limited to 25% of their total occupancy. Dining restaurants are also limited to 25% of the total listed occupancy of the restaurant. If you have a 51% sign on your restaurant slash bar, the governor said this provision allowing you to open your dining room does not apply to you. It only applies to restaurants that do not have, are not required to post that 51% sign. Movie theaters can reopen with up to 25% of their total capacity of each individual theater. The mall, again, is up to 25%, but I've read, I think recently, that they are not intending to reopen this weekend. Museums and libraries are also the 25%. They cannot have the interactive displays or any of those playgrounds that you might see at those places open. No touch kind of surfaces, but other than that, they can be open for visitors. And then services provided by an individual working alone in an office. We had questions as to whether or not, if we have a hairdresser, for instance, who's a sole proprietor, whether or not this applies to them. We interpret it as no, because it does say working in an office in the actual language of the order. But the TDLR yesterday posted a statement on their website that clarified that indeed this provision does not apply to hairdressers and nail salons and those services, that those are restricted even if it's just you in your salon by yourself. He also addressed golf course operations and allows Daniel to still choose which of our services are essential and should be reopened to the public in the manner they used to be open to the public. So one thing that the governor did do in this that I find kind of interesting, he sees a specific language that says that he can take control over any county or counties in which reopen services are prohibited in his discretion, based on his determination, based on the health need. So for instance, if the rest of us are at this 25% reopen status, and there's a county where they're having an outbreak that makes the 25% not safe based on medical criteria, then the governor has retained his authority to handle that specific county differently than the rest of them. And I think, again, this is just another indication that he is limiting local control over this issue in a very strong way. There is still a list of people, and it's actually an expanded list of things that have to stay closed. So he covered some of that gray area that we were concerned about before. And those things are bars, which again is any facility that has the 51% sign, gyms, public swimming pools, interactive amusement venues such as bowling alleys and video arcades. And that interactive amusement venues is a pretty wide thing. Some of the things that we have are, the trampoline park is one that's an interactive venue. We have some arcades that are on trailers that go to people's houses. Those kind of things would also be covered under this. Also massage establishments, tattoo studios, piercing studios, or cosmetology salons. Now, some of those places, we've gotten calls that, you know, a certain salon is open. They can be open to sell the products that they have in their store. They just cannot have anybody in their chairs. And then finally, as we talked about before, he's more limited, more clearly limited the authority of cities or counties to do anything different than what is in this order. So the requests that we're receiving from hairdressers to please allow us to open, he has explicitly stated that cannot happen in this order. So a couple other things that Dr. Vareti, we're going to have, we've talked about doing orders. One is removing occupancy restrictions from essential businesses. The governor's order says that if you're a central business, then the occupancy standards do not apply to you. So since we can't be more strict than that, we're going to remove that order. We're also going to enact an order that's going to require any employer who is testing employees to report those test results, positives and negatives, to the health department. I think that the major concern people have about reopening is that we do not have adequate testing. But we also have heard that there are employers who are doing their own testing, and we would like to add that testing to our numbers to get a better picture of what's happening in our community. And then finally, we're going to, once again, modify the recreation order to allow tennis courts and those things that are currently restricted so that there's not a conflict between his order and the order of the governor. So are there any questions about any of that? I know that was a lot.
Teresa, I have the first one, which constantly comes up, is the issue about churches.
Yes. The governor, he's always declared churches to be essential services, but he's always referred in prior orders to the CDC guidelines, which restricts you to 10 people or less. He removed that restriction. However, he did list a whole bunch of ways he expects churches to operate in order to protect the most vulnerable populations that we have, and that's generally our more senior populations. I mean, he wants social distancing to be occurring in churches, which means skipping pews or seating families together, but, you know, distance between family groups to continue to provide remote services, if possible, to everybody or to your seniors, if that is a necessity, to consider having special, like, at-risk population services. So there's a guidance document, I know Brian's put it on our website. And if people have questions, we can help direct them to that guidance.
All right, Tom Thompson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I've got one, and this goes to Teresa and Dr. Vareti. So let's say some of these private companies are testing, all right? And let's say they've got a population that has already been infected and cleared itself out. Now, if they show up positive on this test, they've already gone through it. So what they might just have is antibody. How is that going to show, how are you going to treat those people if they show up? I know on your test, you're going to call that a positive, but I would say they've already gone through the phase and cleared themselves out. How are you going to handle those?
Dr. Vareti, you might answer that.
Yes, I'll go ahead and I'll take that one. First of all, it's people that are doing antibody tests, you know, that's unproven technology. There's no antibody test that's FDA-approved. When we look at the antibody tests that are being used around the world, we find that none of them apparently have specificity or sensitivity. That's to say, they don't only turn positive with our current coronavirus, but they'll turn positive for all the four coronaviruses that were out before. So that they're not selective. So we don't know if a positive test means you've had COVID or you had one of the other regular coronaviruses. So, you know, we're pretty much blowing off any information from any antibody test because we have no idea what it means. It's kind of sad that people are wasting a lot of money doing this. You know, the United Kingdom just sent back $2 million worth of tests that they were, because they found they didn't work. Spain is actually suing a Chinese company because none of theirs worked it. You know, it's unproven technology. It's going to be there, but it's not there now.
So there are tests out on the market now that companies are buying, and they're being sold here in the US. And there's people that are looking at the, so is there a specific model of test that we approve? Is there not one? I think what I'm going back to is, when they test, what are they actually going to show too?
Okay, there are no approved tests. So any test that anybody's using is an unapproved test. It's something that somebody sold that's never been checked out. It's, you know, it's, you know, I could come up with Jimbo's COVID test and put it out there. And whether it says positive or negative doesn't really have any real significance because we don't know what that test actually shows. So if somebody's got one of these tests that they just bought off the internet or bought from one local place, a positive, we don't know if that means they had COVID or not. If it's negative, we don't mean to know if they had COVID or not. It's just a really frightening things that people are using a technology that hasn't been tested, hasn't been proved, and they're trying to say, yes, you're safe, you can go around COVID people because you have antibodies. We don't know you have antibodies.
So then we wouldn't want those results, would we? Or would we not?
No, I don't, I don't want those results because they have no significance for us. You know, it doesn't mean.
I think what we're asking them to provide us are the swab tests that we do know are more reliable. We're not asking them for antibody test results. I mean, from my understanding, is there are employers who are using those as sort of a screener, but then they verify a response or a result with an actual swab test. And that's the test that we want to be reported to us.
Okay, that's the answer I was looking for.
Okay, great, thank you. Tommy, you had a question?
Teresa, talk through, just for council's benefit, as well as the public that might be watching. When you talked about posting a 51% sign, give more context to that and what that means in terms of the order with respect to the restaurants and bars.
Really, that goes back to a TABC requirement that you have to post that sign if more than 51% of your revenue is for the sale of alcohol. It's how they distinguish lots of rules, including where you can carry handguns, based on the percentage of alcohol that you sell. The governor also, you know, used that as a determination as to who can open up their facility to seat customers, as to whether or not they're a bar or a restaurant.
So put that again in context. If they post a 51, if they must post a 51% sign, they are not allowed to open under this order specifically?
They're not allowed to open their dining areas. They can still operate with the alcohol to go or whatever that service is they're providing. So that's still, they're still allowed to be open and served the way they have been. They just can't allow people to sit in their dining rooms.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? Yes, Billy?
Thank you for your patience when I finally got my technological issues resolved. Mike, I have a couple of questions. One, are we getting the test results back any sooner than we have been in the past?
Dr. Vareti?
Yes, ma'am. We're getting them back really fast now. Both the community and Shannon are doing in-hospital testing, and they're getting results back in 15 minutes to an hour for people that are admitted. The tests that we're sending out primarily at Austin, CPL in Austin, we're getting back in 24 hours. So our turnaround is way better than it was before.
That's great. My second question on the city website, and this is not for you, Dr. Vareti, I don't think, but on the city website, it talks about local governments having a certain latitude and being able to make decisions about opening certain things. Where do we stand on that? What are we doing about that? How are we organizing and managing that?
Well, first of all, it says that on the website, that website needs to get corrected.
Yeah, that is no longer possible as of tomorrow. Under the prior orders that the governor issued, there was, you know, essentially a little loophole that was created that as long as you weren't allowing or closing somebody that the governor said has to be open, you can interpret categories more broadly. We still do have the ability to interpret that essential services list as it's been revised. But for the most part, beginning tomorrow, when this new order of the governor goes into effect, we do not have the ability to say, essentially like some cities did, all of our business is essential, so everybody's going to stay open. He closed that loophole very, very succinctly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Tommy?
Teresa, if you would talk through for the benefit of the outdoor folks that like to play tennis, pickleball, golf, talk through the specifics of what will be existing when this takes effect tomorrow.
Yeah, for those folks, for golf, basically the requirements that we already agreed to with the golf courses for how they could operate, that they have to sanitize their equipment, that they can't have people from different households riding on the same cart, all of those rules stay in place. The governor specifically provided guidance for all of these businesses that are going to be allowed to reopen. And we posted links to that as well on the city website. So if anybody has a question as to what specific requirements they have for their type of industry, they've already provided that guidance in those documents. As far as tennis is concerned, one of the little conflicting things within the order is that on one hand, he's saying that you cannot As far as tennis is concerned, one of the little conflicting things within the order is that on one hand, he's saying that you cannot, you should not be socializing outside of your household, but then when it comes to these outdoor recreations such as tennis, you can have up to four people that can play together in a game like that. And it doesn't have any restriction on household. So for tennis, for instance, four of us could go and play tennis together and it's not a violation of the order. But if four of us go to my house to have drinks or whatever, that, that would violate a different provision.
So I know pickleball is, is gaining traction around the country. We have pickleball here. So the same would apply for pickleball as, as what you just described for tennis.
That is correct. And basically the way we're looking at it is if it's a contact sport like basketball, it's really hard to play basketball effectively without touching somebody. So those courts are still going to be closed. Any other contact type of sports are also going to be closed, but any of those racket sports. The frisbee golf is another question we got. That's, that can be open as long as you're not playing with more than four people.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions from council? If, Tom? He needs to be unmuted. Yeah. Start all over, Tom. It was unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I got one last one. It was presented to me by a constituent in my house. Originally, when we started talking about testing, it was if you're not, you know, if your symptoms aren't too bad, go ahead and stay home and try to work yourself through it. And it was a fear we would flood our hospital system. At this point now, we've got some room. That constituent pointed out to me several times that when should we go in and test? I mean, Dr. Vetras, is there, if we have mild symptoms, are you looking for people to come in now? Or do you still want not to see them unless they're really symptomatic?
Well, we've actually changed our recommendations. It used to be up until like, I think the 27th, the CDC was only saying test people that are symptomatic or have risk factors. And now they're saying you can go ahead and test anybody that wants to be tested just as a public health surveillance. So, you know, if somebody's got symptoms, I completely encourage them to go get tested. I'd really like to know what the prevalence is in our community. You know, we've, we've had a few surprises lately, so I don't want anymore.
Right. And where should they go to test?
Like either hospital can do it. Shannon still has their drive-through. They just had Onoaks because the other one closed because people weren't going to it.
All right. Answer my question.
You know, one of the things that the governor has said over and over again is we're looking to flatten the curve and not to have a spike. And we had really flattened our curve here in San Angelo, but all of a sudden we got six cases yesterday. So in terms of looking at the curve, all of a sudden the spike would go up because six in one day was a significant spike for San Angelo. So we want to make sure everybody understands that, that our ability to continue to open up businesses and to keep the businesses open that will be allowed to open tomorrow and all the activities really depends on our ability to keep this curve flat. And so that means we really need to honor and really think through and make sure people understand. Opening the doors here still has some risk involved. There's still issues here and we really can't afford to not pay attention to this emergency declaration because what we don't want to do is shut down again. So just want to reemphasize the fact that we've done a really good job. Citizens have taken personal responsibility, have shown tremendous social responsibility in honoring these emergency disaster declarations, but it's not over yet. And we need to make sure we're still very significantly aware of the risk that's out there. There's still risk out there and with opening it up, we really don't want, again, I say this, go back and shut down things again because of a huge spike in cases.
Fair enough, me.
Yes, Daniel.
We, I know that right now, wearing a mask is not a requirement per se, but it is highly recommended. I know that yesterday the city did do a distribution of masks, which is very successful. We have about 20,000 masks. Thank you, Mayor, for, for working with the two different entities that made that happen. But we didn't get those distributed. We do highly recommend that if you're out in public, wear those masks. We do have more that are coming in. We did get this batch that came in initially. We want to make sure we got it in the hands of the citizens. But we have more coming in. As soon as those come in, we'll make the announcement. But again, if you're going to be out in public, wear a mask. Again, it's not required, but it is highly recommended.
I want to really give a huge amount of thanks to Brian Vincent. You cannot even imagine what he's gone through in tracking, buying these masks and then tracking them down and getting them here. We were supposed to have the masks here by the 15th of April. And it's just been one freight nightmare after another after another. So originally there was 100,000 masks coming in. We got 25,000. So we'll get more in next week and then there'll be another shipment, but they've not come as quickly and as efficiently in one package as we expected them to be. But Brian has stayed on it. They've worked so aggressively night and day to get these masks to us. And I'm just thankful for what we've been able to get done and get out there in the public. So thank you.
Mayor, I do want to thank Shane Kelton and his staff. They did an incredible job, really organizing and getting those masks distributed yesterday. So again, thank you Shane Kelton for the, and your staff for the hard work that you put in.
With that, may I have a motion to? Oh, sorry, Lucy, go ahead.
Yeah. Dr. Vretis, I wanted to ask you, have you seen a decrease in people testing lately?
Yes, there's been a tremendous decrease in the number of people tested. And with fewer people being tested, we're getting fewer positives. I mean, if you don't test anybody, you'll never have a positive.
We really don't know.
Yeah, one of the things, James, Dr. Vretis, that you might explain, you know, there have been people who said we shouldn't open up until we, every single citizen in the city of San Angelo has been tested. The problem with that is that there, there are a lot of positives, negatives, is that what you call them? Negative positives? And so you could be tested today and two days from today be tested positive when your first test said negative. So we would have to test everybody every day for a long period of time in order to get a true read. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. We have, you know, in the medical community, we think there's a large number of false negatives. We're not sure of the number of false positives, but we're sure that there are a large number of false negatives. And even if the tests were completely accurate, which no test is, you know, the test is only good for when you do that test. So it's like you take a pregnancy test. If it's negative today, it's not necessarily going to be negative two weeks from now. So we would have to do continual retesting. I would love to see more testing in Angelo and Tom Green County.
Okay, thank you. Lane, go ahead.
Yes, this question is for Dr. Vretis and maybe Sandra. Could y'all speak in relation to the numbers of how we're reporting because I've seen the, the past few positives that we've had are from residents of Reynolds County, Potter County. But from what I've heard that the CDC is trying to change to where they're reporting it is not truly to where they're being tested, but their residents in relation to see exactly where it's being spread. So why are we showing our numbers as claiming Tom Green County as a positive when they're tested here, but Reynolds County is where they live or Potter County is where they live?
We changed those numbers, Lane, so that is what we initially do. But then as we get the information in terms of positive or negative, then it gets assigned to the county of which they are the resident or the state of which they are resident, but on the initial test.
It seems on our, on our issued statement yesterday where we're showing still, I believe, 10, 10 positives and a few of those are the Reynolds and Potter County. Has that changed so far? Are we still 10 actively monitored?
Sandra, do you want to answer that?
Yes, I do. So anyway, that first number, the number of tests, those are the tests that are being done, performed in Tom Green County. However, we will attribute, who, actually we looked through all of those forms and now we are dividing them by the county of residence. And that was one of the, one of the, one of the requests that I had gotten from the mayor of Ballinger. She wanted to know how many are coming from Reynolds County to get tested in San Angelo. And we knew that there were other counties because, I mean, obviously we are the hub of at least the 13 counties around us and farther. And so anyway, the number of tests are in Tom Green County. But eventually, even if it's from Reynolds County, we will not monitor that patient. That patient will be monitored through Reynolds County and with the state. So.
When will our 49 positives trickle down to a true number of what is Tom Green County? Because that's what I'm looking at and what I'm getting.
So if you go to the second page that Brian, in that graphic, that second page, that has the breakdown of those Tom Green counties. So those are the ones that we will actually monitor, the ones that are residing in Tom Green County. All those from other counties, those basically are gone away from our monitoring, for monitoring statuses, monitoring purposes, we are no longer doing those. Those either go to the local health department in that county or to the state if they do not have a local health.
So we will always report it, 49 initial positives, but then break it down?
Yes. Yes, those were tested here locally. However, we're not monitoring all of those and that second page will give you the actual Tom Green County numbers, the residents here that we are monitoring or have monitored.
And the same thing applies. There was one that was tested positive and that has residency here, but they were tested in another state and got positive at that state. And so ultimately it transferred into San Angelo's numbers.
Yeah, exactly. And those always get transferred. And that's just a public health, that's just the public health system. It will always go back to the county of residence for statistical purposes. So.
Before I ask for a motion, are there any other further questions that, that you would like to offer? Teresa, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify one other thing that I've heard. I've had a number of people ask me about why can we not go up to the 50% that was listed in the governor's order? The governor does provide a provision that allows certain counties to open, allow them to open up at 50% occupancy instead of the 25. But there's pretty strict criteria to meet in order to do that. And the first criteria is that we have no more than five positive tests. So we're clearly monitoring more than five people currently. So as long as that's the case, we don't even have the opportunity to request the governor to allow us to open at 50%.
Teresa, you made a comment earlier and I want real black and white answer to this. And that was that some, Billy said that on our website, it said the city has a lot of flexibility before this current. We have not had the flexibility. It was very defined by the Department of Homeland Security in terms of what businesses were considered essential businesses. When the Department of Homeland Security changed what they consider essential businesses, then it gave the city an opportunity to open other businesses. But up until the time period that Homeland Security changed, we did not have.
That is correct. And I think a good example of that is in the construction industry. The version 2.0 of that essential services document severely restricted which again, those storm situations is important to allow residential consumer to happen. In the 3.0, they expanded the construction activities that are allowed to both residential and commercial. So yes, the 3.0 is much expansive than the 2.0 was. And that did give us the open things up that were initially closed, but all that occurred, you're right.
We just need to be clear on that because it was, it was sort of presented that we had more flexibility. And you and Dr. Vretis have very, very specifically said Homeland Security has designated these businesses as essential businesses.
Right. And it's really categories of businesses that's on that list. It doesn't say, for instance, you know, clothing stores, but categories that include clothing stores.
Billy?
Yes, Mayor. The comment that I read was more specifically addressed toward counties and municipalities. And it cited areas like museums and libraries and permitting offices, things like that where the local government had some flexibility in the decisions they made about whether they opened up or not.
Right. We do have the ability to decide on our own facilities, what's going to happen, just like any private business owner has. If it's a city-owned or operated facility, then Daniel has the discretion to determine how those facilities are going to operate.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify, that was the comment that I read. It wasn't about essential versus non-essential businesses. It was more about specific areas where the municipalities or the county government, you know, had authority over.
Thank you, Billy. That clarification, that was important. Thank you. All right, we're at that point. Is there further comment? Or may I have a motion for approval? Lane?
Harry Tom, a single member District 3, I make a motion that we approve this public health emergency as, as printed.
Thank you, Harry. May I have a second?
Tommy Hebert, single member District 1, second.
Thank you, Tommy. With no public comment, we will take a vote. I would like to start with single member District 1 to say aye and then we'll go from there. So Tommy?
Tommy Hebert, single member District 1, aye.
Tom Thompson?
Single member District 2, aye.
Harry?
Single member District 3, aye.
Lucy?
Single member District 4, aye.
Uh, Lane?
Single member District 5, aye.
And Billy?
Single member District 6, aye.
Brenda Gunter, the mayor, aye. With that, the emergency meeting declaration has been approved. We will now move into adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment?
Aye, adjourn.
Tommy made a motion, second by Tom. I'm sure there's no public comment on that. So we'll all take a vote, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, the motion passes. We are officially adjourned.